A call order to the work session for the city of East Grand first Tuesday, June 27th, is now five o'clock. Let's see, click, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Cantor.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Ben Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does Terrence McCorn. Number one, 2050 and Street and Highway Element update, Ms. Cuba.
Thank you all for having us here to kind of introduce our, our Street and Highway Plan. I have Jason Carby from HDR. He is our consultant on this project and he will be sharing his screen on, on our presentation. It's pretty much the same one you received already in your packet, but just to kind of go over it a little bit and kind of give a little bit more context as well. We are, basically, this is our, our update to our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It's the last element. We've brought forward our bike and pedestrian plan has recently come forward as well as our Transit Development Plan. This particular part is, it's every five-year update and we, we basically kind of, it's mandated for the MPO to do this, so it's, it's a full transportation plan and the overall MTP, which is Metropolitan Transportation Plan, is basically a comprehensive plan for multi-use transportation, so multiple uses of transportation, so whether it's bicycle, pedestrian, and at the end, it will all be financially constrained and we want to make sure we're having it accessible. So, let Jason hit the next slide. I believe that's kind of where he starts in as to where we've, we are at.
Right, so, yeah, thanks Terry. Nice to be with you all this evening. So, yeah, up until, you know, what we've done through the project thus far is, you know, there's been a lot of plan, you know, studies and plans that have been done in the metro area over the last few years. We're just making sure that we're going through and really taking advantage of all of that information and incorporating it into this kind of overall transportation plan Terry was referencing. So, we did kind of evaluate where we stand as a system now. We'll talk about that, kind of that existing conditions. Part of the MPO's function is making sure that they're using, you know, federal transportation dollars wisely when they're guidelines, so we're making sure that we're incorporating that federal guidance. And we did have the chance to talk with a wide group of stakeholders and the public at a public meeting in November, and all of that's really kind of come together to develop the goals and objectives that are really shaping the direction of the transportation plan. And so I referenced that, the public engagement. We had our first kind of round of public open house in November of last year. We had a stakeholder discussion in a public open house at the East Grand Forks Public Library right there. And, you know, kind of what we heard through those interactions with the public is that the plan really needs to prioritize safety, you know, putting a high, high value on reducing injury and fatal crashes, making sure we have an efficient, reliable system. And then we really heard from a lot of folks that they were really interested in making sure we had safe and connected bicycle and pedestrian system. So, I'm not going to walk through all of this, but real point is that based on all of the reviewing of existing studies, looking at federal guidelines and then getting that input from, from the public, we identified five goals and each of those goals has an objective. And the real point of the objectives, and I'm, again, not going to walk through in all the details, is that each of those objectives take those goal areas and identify ways we can measure how well we're doing at achieving that overall vision. So, those five goal areas, again, efficient and reliable, safe, connected and accessible, preserved and maintained, that's really, again, focusing on making sure we take the investments that we've made over the past and, and keeping them up in the best condition that we can, and then sustainable and resilient. So, those were those, those five kind of goal areas that kind of arose out of all of that, that input and the previous studies that have been done in those federal guidelines. I did reference kind of that existing and future conditions. So, basically, this is a snapshot of how the system's doing today, so kind of know where we're at today to get an idea of taking those goals and objectives and what direction we want to go in the future. So, we looked at safety, looking at where we've got crash hotspots, you know, how reliable and efficient are the traffic operations in the system, where, where might we have some, you know, existing areas of congestion, pavement and bridge conditions, looking at, you know, how the, the quality of the pavement, how connected the road network is, identifying that environmental baseline. And then Terry's going to talk a little bit here in a minute about future traffic growth and our future land development growth, and then so working, you know, where we think future traffic's going to come in to the, doing traffic forecast with the, with the travel model. And so, we're going to talk a little bit about what the travel demand model is. It's essentially a decision-making tool. It's basically looking at how the transportation networks, so our streets and highways, how they interact with where everybody lives, you know, where jobs are located, services, you know, across the entire Grand Forks, East Grand Forks area. And so, it's really looking at that interaction and how much travel occurs across it. So, it takes, you know, standard procedures that are kind of state-of-the-practice from across the country, but really looks at, you know, what kind of traffic patterns do we have in, say, East Grand Forks and how can we adjust the model to really reflect those patterns? But the real benefit is when we're doing a, you know, a, a plan for the year 2050, is this travel demand model can help us inform these what-if scenarios. So, we know what happens is the, as the area continues to grow between today and in the year 2050. What happens, you know, if we change some of the transportation system, looking at new streets, new bridges, new interchanges, things like that, how does traffic react to that? So, that's kind of the power of what this, this tool allows us. And so, I think, you know, it's something that the MPO maintains and updates every five years to kind of support this planning effort, and so that's kind of the background of some of the information we're going to share here.
Just so, so you know, we do use local information to help inform a lot of the, a lot of the other outside information that can be used for our traffic demand model. A, a good example is our, is all the land use information that we use. We've already up, we helped both cities of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks update their land use plans, and from there, we also received kind of that idea of how are, what estimations are more probable for happening in the East Grand Forks area or the Grand Forks area? In the East Grand Forks plan specifically, we used a 0.4% annual growth. So, we use that, that percentage growth and we bring it up to a 2035 or, and 2050 timeframe. And so, our growth in East Grand Forks is, is pretty steady and, and the history has shown that it's been growing in a, in a very steady manner throughout the whole, throughout history, even when we did a deep drop and then back up again. We also see some growth in the south end of East Grand Forks, as well as we see a lot of south of Grand Forks and possibly looking on the west side of the interstate for the south end and the north end of Grand Forks, but we also do see north end and south end, East Grand Forks growth. We've looked at the job information as well, and we see that we're looking at possible growth in the industrial areas for both Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, and there's a lot of more kind of all the way around Grand Forks for that job growth. And once again, we use basically that population and looking at the various types of employment opportunities, whether it's manufacturing, agriculture, there's a, there's an idea of roughly how many persons per acre are employed per, per type of employment, so, and that's how we get our job growth. And so, we take that and as well as some school information, we kind of, we get the base information of the school population, and then we also use the various other things to, in relation to this other, all these estimates, and then we move to, then we ask ATAC to kind of put it into their model, and they run various iterations of the model to make it look like it's hap, what's happening on the ground, so that, that's kind of that validation information. And then, we end up with some, we've ran it to the future of 2050, and so we'll, we'll kind of, Jason, let you, talk you through the information that we've seen in the model that we've received so far.
Sure. Yeah, so again, you know, Terry touched on this, what we do is we have kind of the existing land use, where people work, where they live. We kind of take all that information, we know how much traffic's out there today, and so what we, we do is kind of, Terry talked about calibration, so we calibrated to kind of fit that. Then we talk about all that growth that we were anticipating, you know, she showed, you know, the growth and kind of the, you know, say the Point neighborhood and then some of, you know, and even in South Grand Forks. And then, so how does that affect traffic if we continue to see those growth patterns? So, we've got a few slides here that kind of show future conditions. So, this one is in bands of traffic and you can see the darker and wider those lines, the more traffic. So, in East Grand Forks, we've got, you know, some areas on Demers and Gateway where we've got, you know, 10,000 to 25,000 ADT, and you can see on the, on the Grand Forks side, we've got some areas over 25,000 ADT, which is average daily traffic. So, how many cars and trucks a day do each of those see? I think what's really interesting is how much growth we're anticipating. And so, you can see that, you know, this Gateway Corridor, the, on Demers, we're anticipating about 5,000 to 10,000 new trips a day, and how does that turn into, you know, future congestion levels? And so, the red and the orange lines are where we anticipate seeing additional, you know, congestion in the future. This is during that peak hour when, you know, we start to see that today, maybe on some corridors, where do we start seeing more? And so, we're anticipating that across, and we, this is a draft, we'll know, do have some updated numbers here that kind of show some additional congestion when we had some time to kind of dig into it a little bit more. So, you can see here, we're seeing some more growth, like on the, on the Point Bridge over, over the river, and then a little bit on, through the Demers Corridor. And so, anticipate, starting to see some of those elevated congestion levels as the, as the metro area continues to grow. Pardon me. So, we originally anticipated presenting a couple of weeks ago, but we're, right before our public open house, we were, we had a public open house Wednesday, June 21st, and a stakeholder meeting, so that was kind of one of those milestones that we identified here. But looking forward, we're, we're wrapping up the plan this year, anticipating, you know, working through alternatives and, and working through kind of the, the costs and the, and the funding for all these projects that, that will come out of this plan, and recommendations through this fall, looking to have a draft plan in October, and then, again, wrap it up with some presentations and, and approvals and actions by committees through the end of the year. I guess I'll wrap it up there and say, you know, thanks and see if there's any questions. Terry, anything that we should add?
Just that we are allowing for having, asking for public input until July 14th on, on all the information that we've presented at our public meeting. It's also available on our website at the GF, egfstreets.com, so, but if there's any other questions, we, we're here to answer.
There.
Question, um, how would you respond to someone who said you can't use Fargo data to project traffic in Grand Forks and East Grand Forks? How would you respond to that?
Well, it depends upon where that data is coming from, but a lot of times, I know Jason has, has answered some of that of, of where it's, you know, what the type of data we're using in relation to, you know, a lot of times, we're assuming it's talking about kind of that travel, that trip, work to, home to work type of trips and that type of analysis that can get, you can do that, do those, those surveys.
Extrapolations kind of a thing?
You could do those surveys, otherwise, we're using national data. Fargo dat, Fargo did a, a, what was it, Jason?
It's a travel survey, yeah. So, yeah, I guess, so you, when, when you build models, what you do is you, you tend to start with any local data you've got and, but you also sometimes need to start with national data. There's a National Household Travel Survey that's done every seven years or so, and sometimes that's kind of the starting point. But what you really need to do as you go through this process is, is, is go through and identify with local observed data how this national data fits for East Grand Forks, Grand Forks. And so, you know, the, I think Terry mentioned that ATAC kind of builds the model. So, what they did was they, instead of starting with national data for how many trips each household makes, they, I think, I believe they started with some Fargo data for how many trips each household makes. But when you go through this process, you always go through and what, go through what we call a validation and calibration. And so, they did kind of adjust those as, as they went through this process of, okay, how many trips come out of a, a household with three people and two cars, and how many go to a, a business with 10 retail employees and things like that. And so, based on what we see in East Grand Forks and Grand Forks, made adjustments to that data. So, the, the theory was Fargo was a better starting point than, say, national default data on, on something like that.
Super. Just so you're ready to answer that, I wouldn't be the one raising that red flag, but someone might. And so, as long as you're ready to address that, you know, from a scientific perspective, you know, using statistics and, as you say, recalibrating for the local condition, just anticipate that because it's likely to come.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, yep.
Anybody else have anything? Is he on?
All right.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to number two discussion on the city administrator position process. Maybe Liza's on?
Yes, good evening. Let me turn on my camera here. All right, good evening, everyone. So, as you are well aware, we were unable to host our interviews yesterday. We had four finalists that the council had invited for interviews to take place yesterday, and last Thursday morning, one of the finalists withdrew from the process as that person accepted a position elsewhere. And then Saturday evening at approximately 9:30, then I received another notification that the other, that another finalist had withdrawn for unstated reasons. So, we decided to take a pause and, and as part of tonight's workshop is to discuss how do we want to move forward. And I did include a memo to be included in the packet, of which I've laid out three options that I see. I'm also very open to any other options that this council may have as well. So, I can walk the group through those three options unless there's immediate questions that you may have.
I think it's probably the best thing to do is walk through them, then we can go into questions, because I'm sure there's going to be some.
Sure. All right, so I tried to lay out three options with a very generic timeline, if you will. So, a most immediate solution, a two-to-three-month solution, and a five-to-six-month solution. So, your most immediate included in that option is to go back, the city council to go back to the semi, the list of semifinalists that I had forwarded to you, just to determine whether there are any finalists or semifinalists that you'd like to bring forward and invite for interviews. If you were to decide that, I would be able to get started on backgrounding and we could conduct interviews within a matter of weeks. And then, whoever is selected, that person, I would envision there'd be a 30-to-45-day transition period in order for that person to assume the chair. So, that's your most immediate option. The next option, the two-to-three-month, we were to get started posting right away, so we have to post for 30 days, come back before the council, you as a council would select finalists, and then we would select interview date and then conduct those interviews again. We would obviously invite the two finalists that would have made the, the interviews yesterday, so they would be automatically just pushed forward through the process. That, I envisioned we could get somebody in the chair within three months. And then the final option that I saw, five-to-six months, so allowing the market to regenerate new, fresh candidates. We would get started advertising after Labor Day, and by the time we repost, select semifinalists or push forward semifinalists for you to eventually select your finalists, select that interview day, I would envision the person would be in the chair in December. So, there's risk to each of those three options. You know, the, the most immediate option is, you know, if you as a council were to decide that you wanted to pull through one or two of the semifinalists from that list, you know, there could be a risk that maybe they're no longer interested or maybe have an opportunity elsewhere. The risk I see in the two-to-three-month option is that the market hasn't changed a whole lot since we last advertised in April or May, so I'm not sure what type of candidate pool that we'll receive. And then finally, that last option, the five-to-six-month option, it puts greater, greater pressure on your staff to still continue to guide the council and the city through this, the vacancy that you have, and you're also going to be interviewing during your winter months, which, you know, that's a risk all on its own. And then also, we just still don't know what the market will be. I've sometimes found that the latter part of the year, once cities have already started engaging in their budget process, it can be a slower time for candidates to be looking at, at interviewing for other positions because they're busy working on budgets in their own organizations. Also, if it's a younger candidate with a family, maybe they already ingrained in their school year, so it may make it a little bit more challenging to find candidates who are willing to make a move mid-year, and especially during the holiday season. So, that's the high-low of my memo and, and as I mentioned, open to any other options that I may not have thought of, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anybody have any questions right away? Thoughts? Mayor?
I guess my only thought, on its face, I don't like number two. Because the market has not substantially changed, I don't like number two. One and three both seem very plausible to me, but that's just my, my initial thought as I looked at it earlier and as I look at it now.
Stroms.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see us start on number one. That seems like the easiest and simplest way. If there's somebody out there, and maybe we should look at having, instead of a couple more, maybe get four more. So, we're looking at six in case this happens again, somebody drops out, we still got some candidates there to, to work with, but that, that'd be my, that'd be my favorite one is number one option.
Anybody else have anything? I think number one is more appetizing for myself, plus, I guess my question for you, Liza, is of the 12 that we did not see, is there something maybe in those 12 too that reasoning why they didn't move to the eight that you brought forward that may be something that we can maybe to go back and take a look at?
So, in preparation for tonight's meeting, I did go back and look at the semifinalists I did not push forward, or the candidates I did not push forward into the semifinalist stage, and honestly, I did not feel that they either had the qualifications or there was something about their history that didn't sit right with me, whether it's they've been a job hopper or other things that have come up in their backgrounding, that I didn't feel comfortable moving them forward. So, no, I, I don't, I feel that the eight that I had originally presented are the ones that I felt best represented those desired attributes that you were speaking of, as well as met some of those minimum qualifications.
And of those eight, we had one drop out, so we were down to seven, correct?
We, we did.
Originally, so.
I mean, I could certainly reach out and ask if that candidate has a change of heart considering the, the recent news, but, yeah.
So, really, we're looking at three, maybe four that were on the finalist list that you sent, semifinalists?
Correct. I think there was, yes, there'd be three left for the council's choosing. And there was a finalist that received three votes and another final, or, I apologize. There was a semifinalist that received three votes when we passed the ballot system, and then there was another semifinalist that received one single vote, and then your other, your other candidate, zero votes.
Okay, Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mr. President. With what she just passed on, then I'm, I would go for option two or three. I don't know that, you start contacting those on option one, chances are, most of those have probably moved on already also. So, I'm leaning to, let's just start all over, and whether we do it now or whether we do it in the fall, I'm open for either one.
Anybody else have any comments? I don't like number three at all, personally. I just, we, I don't think we can wait that long. I don't think, I mean, you're looking at, possibly, they maybe not start till April, May of next year. And I don't think we should be doing that. I think we need to, I think we need to move forward to number one, but, I mean, if people want to discuss in number two, let's discuss it, let's have some discussion on it. We need to do something. I guess we need to give direction to Liza what we want to do so she can start her process, and Mr. Larson?
Is there a good chance that it'll be apparent if we, if we start with option one, that it's not going to work? And then, you know, we would then go to option two, you know, after we get some feedback from the candidates again?
Yeah.
I was going to say, I certainly would provide an update as soon as I had contacted each of the, the candidates.
Sure.
I think that'd be a very good starting point. Find out how many of them are still available and interested.
I guess with that in mind, we would have to have a special meeting to go over it, and with the holidays coming up, we need to take that into account. Our meeting's next Wednesday, correct, the fifth? So, I mean, if we had to do a special meeting after the fifth, we could, we could do that.
I've got a quick question for Liza. What were the two candidates that actually received votes? Like what were their candidate numbers?
Candidate number one received one vote. Candidate number eight received three votes.
Okay.
Do you guys want number one option for now and a special meeting on the fifth? Is that fine with everyone?
I definitely don't want option three.
You okay with everybody?
Yeah.
A lot of nodding, Dale, you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
I know you are, I saw you nod. You fine with that, one, and then special meeting on the fifth?
Sure.
Okay. Mayor, you okay with that? Want to include you, you know?
Feel good. I'm all happy now.
Okay. So, Liza, if you want to reach out and then, you know, correspond back to us, we're going to schedule a special meeting on the fifth, it's a Wednesday, so.
You bet. I will do that.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks for attending.
All right, thank you.
If you want to stay around, you can, but, you know.
Great, I thought I'd hang up and start making phone calls now, so.
Sounds good.
Look to you. All right, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, yep.
Number three, request for concrete replacement, Fourth Street, Northeast, Eighth Avenue. Mr. Emery?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think as everyone's aware, Op Construction is currently working on Fourth Street. We, in fact, we completed pretty much all of the concrete curb and gutter work today, and they will be doing the main line paving next week, so things are moving along good. At what used to be kind of the- along good. At what used to be kind of the intersection of Fourth Street and Eighth Avenue, Eighth Avenue has been vacated the last couple of years there. But just kind of on the backside of what I would call the South Curb Line, it was really weird how that road came into the street. It was like the road dipped down to almost an area inlet, and then it kind of came back up to the curb. It was a pretty large dip, and, you know, Folsom Farms said over the years they've had troubles with, you know, their semis and stuff, you know, driving through that dip or whatever. So they'd asked about raising that area inlet, taking out some additional concrete panel replacements, you know, which would be back on to essentially private property too, because it would be out of the road right away at this point. So we had worked with Op Construction. I kind of showed on the map here just roughly what the additional concrete would be. So worked with Op Construction. They provided a cost estimate, which I modified a little bit. That one manhole was part of the project that Op had put it in there, so I pulled out about $1,500. So, you know, roughly about $38,100 to redo the concrete there to, you know, really minimize that dip, improve access there for Folsom Farms. But the one question they had asked was if the city would be willing to add that cost to their special assessment, you know, in lieu of them having to come up with $38,000, you know, right up front and pay Op Construction. So I guess that's what I'm bringing forward tonight to see if you would be fine with that.
I didn't know at the time you were going to say something. I mean, you, Mr. Galston, you talked to him, right, and went through that process?
Yep. I've talked to him. They are pretty much 100% on board if the city was willing to allow them to just to put it on their special assessments.
As long as they sign off on it? Sign off?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Alms?
Thank you. We're getting this, we're in, we're ahead of the game here on this, so we're not getting into all this change order stuff and stuff on this now, aren't we? I mean, are we, are they that far along, they're not that far along that they can go ahead and do this, they haven't poured in concrete or nothing, right?
No, that's correct. In fact, they, to do this, they're going to have to do what I was showing in red.
Yeah.
They actually got to do a little more additional removal.
Right.
And replacement. But no, early enough in the game that they're going to be able to complete this work while they're there working. So.
Yeah.
No change orders.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure that we're okay there.
Anybody else have anything? Seen none, sir? Appreciate it. Move on to number four. Consider authorizing plans and specification for city project number five sidewalk and multi-use trail extensions. Mr. Emery?
Thank you again, Mr. President. So if you kind of recall, last fall, I think it's probably about the time we were even looking at, you know, what we wanted to do for ADA project for this coming construction season. One of the projects we were looking at was this multi-use trail sidewalk project along Fourth Street Northwest and Fifth Avenue Northwest. Again, just kind of north of the library there. At that time, kind of due to cost, we didn't, you know, we decided not to proceed with that. Nancy did apply for funding for this project through the carbon reduction program, and the city was successful in getting some funding for that work in the amount of about $35,000. And then the thought was, you know, we would potentially use state aid maintenance money and then do this project in lieu of ADA project, say, in 2024. I did just find out today too, from our district state aid engineer, that there's going to be a funding program coming out. It's called active transportation funding. And he thought that this would be a very good candidate for that and would help actually fill the gap that your carbon reduction program isn't funding. So again, that's something we'll keep an eye open for and apply for that to try to fill that, you know, about $70,000 gap roughly. And I did ask him, I said, so if we started on plans, you know, before this other funding program comes out, would we still be eligible? And he said, yeah, as long as we have not let the project, bid the project, we would still be eligible. And my thought was, you know, again, I just wanted to get this out there. If we have manpower to be able to, you know, put together plans and specs summer into the fall, because we got to go through MNDOT, this is federal funding, so we may even have to go through MNDOT central office. So there's going to be some red tag tied to this funding. So, you know, my thought was, get the plans done, get them approved. And even if we do that by September, we would probably just put them on the shelf until December, January, so we can bid it, you know, during peak bidding time. So I guess that's really what I was just looking for at this point, is just to get authorization to, you know, move ahead with plans and specs.
I think it's one of the things we talked about, like you said, and I think that's, I think people have been asking for that connection there. So I think it's a project that we should go forth with. Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I think it's a good project as well. Just today, I noticed maybe half a dozen young children on their bikes in this area of Fifth and Fourth. And Fourth gets quite busy, even in the middle of the day. And so having this connection can keep the kids on the trails off the busy road. I think it's a great project, and we should really try and apply for that new program to help.
Definitely.
Fill the funding gap.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think this is, it ties up several kind of dead ends. And connecting to the library, it's really a good use of funds and bringing the trail kind of to another connection there. As you're applying for these additional funds, please do consider 10th Street Southeast by the Hartsfield Cooley that really desperately needs a sidewalk. Okay? That's where the narrow road where there's no parking and it curves right there by Mayor Stouse's old house.
Oh, right there.
Right there.
Okay.
Really needs a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Cars are coming around the corner, and pedestrians are walking right on that pavement section. And so if we can all kind of just put that in the back of our mind as a high priority, that, I would appreciate it. I think it's a real strong safety concern.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have anything? Seen none, sir?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Move on to number five. Consider approving and hiring a police officer. Chief Headland?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've completed the background process for a police officer applicant, Vanessa Richter. Vanessa's a former Grand Forks police officer with about eight years of experience. She was a corporal with the Grand Forks Police Department, instructor in a variety of topics. And at one point in time, she was also the commander of the bomb team. So she is very experienced. She has left the Grand Forks PD to focus on a private business that she opened. And she, over the course of time, discovered that she missed law enforcement. She has been working part-time for the University of North Dakota Police Department, but is looking to return to law enforcement on a full-time basis and applied with us. I think she's an excellent candidate. I have no doubt that she would fit in very well with her department. And she's a very talented young woman. We're requesting that she start at step five, based on her prior pay when she was with the Grand Forks Police Department.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Move on to number six.
A while back, the city had a company come in and do an analysis of the roofs of basically every city building. Over the course of that discussion, they did present a recommendation for the police department building as well. I hadn't pushed that forward just because of the limitations on some of the funding available in our city building fund. But we reached a point now where there is funding available. And speaking with Ms. Anderson, we decided that this would be a good time to bring these projects forward. Head Tech to Roofing, which has done a number of other of these related projects, with the city come and do a bid based upon this evaluation, as well as coming in and doing their own examination of our roof. Their proposal was my attachment to the bid of $10,826, I believe is what it is, and looking to get approval to move forward on that project.
Any questions? Seen none, sir?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Request to approve repairs to VFW Memorial Area Arena Lobby. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. As you all know, this spring, when we had started having some snow melt and then some late snowfalls, we had some roof damage at the VFW arena in the front lobby. There's kind of a wood decking structure that connects the old warming house. It's a concrete roof structure to the arena that was built in the early 80s. And in that area where the wood decking is the, basically the wood decking that the joist hangers are tied to failed. And so thankfully, we had contractors that were able to kind of drop what they were doing and come over fast and build some temporary walls. And with those temporary walls, when they jacked the floor back up, we feel really confident that we saved the roof, the actual rubber roofing that's there. We have not had any leaking at all through the snow melt or any rainfalls this summer. So we're really looking at just repairs to put the interior back together. It has a tongue and groove cedar, or had a tongue and groove cedar, and some original batted insulation that, you know, is, leaves a little to be desired for today's moisture and building code requirements. So I have the quote included in the packet from Adam Carview Construction, Triple J Construction, those two companies work together, would work together on this project. I've gone through it really well with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance, and they're comfortable and happy with the proposed repairs. And they would be able to start on those within a couple of weeks, at least start pecking away at it as they find time to be able to put the repairs back together. The one piece of project scope, I guess I'd like to ask for approval on beyond the insurance claim is, while we're there, in the area that the damage was sustained, we would remove all of the fluorescent lighting that was damaged with updated LED lighting. And while we're there, I think it would just be smart of us to update the entire lobby area and the locker rooms and restrooms that are there with LED, so it was all the same. In talking with Eagle Electric about that, we didn't get a specific dollar amount to do that, but Mr. Boishamp, Jody, felt like it was, it wouldn't exceed $5,000 to be able to remove all the fluorescent lighting and go to an LED fixture instead. And so I think without a price, I would just, we would use building maintenance funds that are remaining for this year to be able to finish that off. And we'd just do it on basically a time and material basis once they were in there, if everyone is okay with that.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Galston?
I'm just curious, have you talked to Waterlight about the...
Well, we will. We haven't to this point, but we will, as we do with all projects when we update the LED. You know, history says that the rebate we'll get from them is going to be in probably the $500, $600 area for a project like this.
Anybody else have anything? Seen none, sir? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
None of the hours up. Discussion on electric scooter licensing regulations. Mr. Galston?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, this is one of those areas where we ended up entering into a memorandum of understanding with Bird, Inc. on the electric scooters, so they can operate. However, there's been some talk about getting an ordinance in place for licensing and then just operation. I didn't feel that I wanted to be the one that directed that, so to speak, without having more information from the council. So I just wanted to bring it for discussion. Primarily, I believe Megan indicated, or put the Grand Forks ordinance. I think the licensing aspect of that is pretty accurate. Why create a new wheel? I could use a lot of that. The other portion of that, the operational end of it, a lot of that is fine. Also, I think provided was the model ordinance that Bird has. Bird basically indicates that you only can use them on the streets and then any bike paths or sheroes, so to speak. Grand Forks says you can use the operation on most streets and sidewalks. So I'm not sure what the city wanted to do regarding that. If you looked at the Grand Forks ordinance, they have a certain area, primarily the downtown, where they can't be used on those sidewalks, but they can pretty much be used on any other sidewalk that's available. So that's my primary focus would be on how you would want them used, could they be used on sidewalks, those types of things. Thank you. So any comments, questions, discussion, direction for me, please?
Stroms?
Thank you. Wasn't there just some talk about the Greenway, about riding those things? Because there's no motorized vehicles on the Greenway, so that'd be a motorized vehicle. Are we going to have that in there that they cannot ride on the Greenway trails? Or is that a, is that considered a bike path that they would be able to?
Well, the ordinance that Grand Forks has and that I would suggest and would be following the rules of the Greenway, and it indicates that if there's any location that says motor vehicles prohibited, this would be considered a motor vehicle and you couldn't use them. So that would be a violation. So you wouldn't open it up to that. That doesn't mean somebody's not going to go down them.
Right.
So you'd end up having to enforce it. But they would not, from my reading, or I could make it very clear, that you wouldn't be able to use them on those Greenway trails if it's in violation of the rules and then the markings on the rules that say you can't use motorized vehicles.
Mr. Mayor?
We're allowing electric bikes in a lot of our trail system, and I feel like this would be very much like those electric bikes, where it's kind of a power-assist electric bike. It has that same feel to me.
And I will leave all that up to you guys. And whether or not that violates the Greenway rules or Greenway rules, I don't know. So I haven't looked at that close enough on to follow those rules. But I mean, you would have a hard time understand, if it's a bike, if they're pedaling it or not on an electric assist, to be able to even find out if they're using them unless they're going about 50 miles an hour.
Their feet are moving, so.
Well, most of them, they're moving their feet on the electric.
And a scooter, you can pedal with your off foot too. I mean, technically, it's a dual-powered vehicle.
Reed?
Yeah, I was just going to touch quickly on the Greenway, the Greenway rules and ordinance. The key to the bicycle is that it has to be a pedal-assisted bicycle that stays under a certain speed limit. I don't recall off the top of my head what the speed limit is. But in our discussion, our Greenway technical meetings, these Bird scooters will be allowed on the Greenway and Grand Forks as well. They're under that speed limit that they're, they're a motorized, electric motor. But in the sense of a motorized vehicle, we're talking about, like, engines, you know, gas-powered engine type that are going to travel 30-plus miles an hour. That's what's prohibited on Greenway trails.
And these are limited at 15 miles an hour, so.
Yeah. I don't have any problem letting these go on the Greenway at all. I do have a problem with letting them go on any other sidewalk in town. I was in Seattle a couple weeks ago, and these scooters are everywhere there. And the people that ride them are nuisance when they're on sidewalks, because they're weaving in around people. Granted, in Seattle, there's a few more pedestrians on the roads, but we don't have very wide sidewalks in many parts of our town. So even in non-commercial areas, I feel like our sidewalks aren't wide enough for there to be a pedestrian and then someone riding a scooter 15 miles an hour on the sidewalk. I'm good with them riding on the side of the road. How, do these have GPS that they shut off if they go out of a certain boundary, or?
They do have GPS. I think that they probably, if you have an area that they're not allowed in, you geofence it, I believe, that they would shut off at those locations. But we could have Bird back to be able to explain that in better detail, but I believe that that's accurate.
And then if there's a violation, and are we calling up Chief Headland to track down some kid to give him a ticket? Or are we just tracking these violations and saying, hey, Bird, we've had this many violations, let's stop this agreement?
Well, it could be both. The agreement and the ordinance would indicate that if there's enough violations, you could stop it. And then I believe, just a memorandum, I think we could, we could say, hey, either party could pull out with notice, you know.
Anything else, sir?
Nope. Thank you.
I find it amazing that under their operating things, they say, no person shall operate an electric scooter upon any park property, playgrounds, recreational areas, Greenway, or on or upon any flood levees or flood control works of the city. or on or upon any flood levees or flood control works of the city." And they gave it back, and the electric scooter is permitted on designated roadways and sidewalks. And it lists bike paths or shared-use paths, which could be considered Greenway.
I guess I can't answer for Grand Forks on how they're doing it, but I think what they were probably doing is following the Greenway rules at the time when they drafted this in 2022.
Mr. Holmes.
Yeah, in your response, Mr. Mayor, that was one of my reasonings on the, on the Greenways, because I got a call from a gentleman that jogs there every day, and he has been on there when those bicycles are on there. And he said, "They come around those curves and you can't see them, and it's pretty dangerous because they are coming pretty fast." So that was my, my main concern about that. I don't want to see anybody getting hit down or, you know, when they come around those curves and they can't see somebody anyway. That's, that's, I guess my intention, my thoughts of Greenway was there for walkers and joggers and, and not bikes and scooters and everything else, but that was just...
Boy, it's easy to go 15, 20 miles an hour on a bicycle, though. Yeah, it is, real easy. So, I mean, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make provision for that and just, hey, standard control on those hairpin turns, just standard control, everybody keep to your side. We're going to have to share that trail. I believe that's where we're going to end up.
Larson.
Yeah, I guess I, I had a question about how we would, or I guess kind of regarding Grand Forks' map there, showing where they'd be allowed on the sidewalks and how we consider that in East Grand Forks. Councilman Pockshavinsky's comment about not allowing them on the sidewalks seems like it'd be very clear in East Grand Forks. Then I'm in favor of them being on the Greenway as well. I don't think we would want to cut that off. That could impact some of the use here, especially from people visiting towns, staying at the campgrounds. Taking the Greenway would be great. So I'd be in favor of, of this, just not allowed on residential-style sidewalks, or however we want to classify that. I have ridden these before on our campus, and they're, they're smart enough to sense congestion, and they automatically slow down. So I thought that was interesting. I don't know if it's picking up other people's cell phones and it's knowing where you automatically slow down and speed back up. But that was kind of jarring at first, but I, but I appreciate the technology, you know, so you don't plow into a group of folks. You go from 15 miles an hour to 5 miles an hour, so, yeah. And they are geofenced. If you tried to take it into Minnesota now, it would just stop. You'd have to turn back around and go across the bridge. That was my comments.
Thank you. One other provision I'd like to see is these bike, or these scooters can't be dumped on the Greenway. I was out on a bike ride with my boys a couple of weeks ago, and there were three of these scooters just on the side of the Greenway path, which we don't want to see that on, on the Greenway at all, so.
Well, technically speaking, if you look at the ordinance, they're supposed to be parked on hard areas, there's different aspects of it. I mean, you know as well as I that not everybody follows the rules. But then they're supposed to be picked up within a certain timeframe by the, by the company. Now, if you, I believe if I recall correctly, the Grand Forks ordinance said something about they had seven days to relocate them. I believe the model ordinance said 72 hours. You know, there's a, there's a different timeframe to, to pick them up and leave them, so that would be also up to discussion from this group.
Could we pass a fine on to whoever left the scooter in a spot where we don't want it left? Say like a $10 fine that automatically gets billed to, you know, the rider that leave it there? Because Bird should know who left it there, because you have to, there's an app for these and you have to sign up for that. And then is that something that the city could collect? I mean, someone, I don't, I don't know.
I think we could do about anything. I think one of the minor issues that you would run into is, is maybe I parked it on a hard concrete area right here, and 20 minutes later, some kid tried to get on it and push it down the street, and it didn't work, and I dropped it. And you could probably, from the geofencing or the GPS, figure that out, but I don't know enough about the technology. I think if, first, we could do a fine aspect of it, which would be an administrative fine. There's also fines that are built in to the ordinance. But more of these detailed questions that you have, I think we should invite Bird back on, on some of those answers, because I just don't have them.
Even if all they did was not let an individual rent it again, if that's all they did, it would be enough. Because you'd slowly purge the knuckleheads out of the process, because they couldn't rent them again.
How do you control that, though?
I mean, it would be on Bird's end.
Right.
You put your ID, your credit card, and they, they know.
Right, but if your friend rents it for you.
Right on.
Right. I mean, I don't know how you would control that. I don't know if that's even worth our money to it.
Oh, no, it would be totally their, their, how they would run their business. We wouldn't get any money out of it. But you would think that little by little, the bad operators wouldn't be allowed to use them anymore.
Anybody else have anything?
The only thing that I was going to say is, is all of, all of it is, is a renewal basis on a licensing fee, which you would end up needing to pass on a yearly basis. And so if there's all kinds of things that you just aren't, that aren't working out, you just don't renew the license.
Anybody else have any guidance? Megan.
I would just say that dealing with Bird, Inc., we have a new person that I've been talking with or emailing with, I should say, and they've been very attentive, let us know if any questions come up. So I can email him a bunch of these questions and possibly bring stuff to the next council meeting, or send it out in a memo. So if you guys have things that come up, or they'd be more than happy to come and join the meeting again. So I know that they would be, I have no issues with any of that.
So from my direction, no sidewalks, bike trails are fine.
Streets.
Streets.
Would we exclude any streets?
But that's, that's the next question I was going to say, is there, well, first of all, I don't know about MINDOT, but there could possibly, you know, the highway, you're not going to want them on the highway, so you'd have to cross that 90 degrees if possible. But is there any other streets in town that you would like to restrict?
You say highway, are you referring to Highway 2?
Yes.
Yep.
I don't know any streets that we don't restrict them on, I guess. Great, sir? Good?
Better than good.
Did you learn anything? Did we help anything?
All right, number nine, consider making billboard by Highway 2 conforming. Ms. Nelson.
I think you're all aware of the billboard that's located by the pool right off of Highway 2. That was initially put up in 1998. It was not approved by MINDOT when it was initially put up. They've, over the last couple of years, they've been talking with staff. We filed for a permit and have been issued the, the permit for it, but it is still considered non-conforming because of its current location. MINDOT did tell me that if the council passes a resolution saying that it has legal status, they will change, change it from non-conforming to conforming, and then we can make updates to it, change the front, possibly cover the back. And they said if we don't want to do anything with it, then if we would take it down, kind of do one or the other. If we want to keep it, make it legal, dress it up, otherwise, take it down. So I guess right now, I would like direction from the council. Would you like to see a resolution next week where we make this legal, and then we can start the process of updating that? Or would you like to see that taken down? I know the mayor would like to see it up, so, but what would, what is the view of the council?
Is Cabela's still involved in this, or...
So at this time, I have not reached out to anybody. I do have contact information, that will be my next step, to see if they're interested and want to participate in that. And I am aware of a couple of different companies that we could possibly get some quotes from, just to figure out prices. I really, I did talk to somebody, but price-wise, I, I would prefer that they come out, take a look, and not only would we cover or redo the front, but try and cover up the back, so it's not such an eyesore. So I, I want them to come and take a look before I start getting real quotes on anything.
Mr. Goldstein.
Just a question is, is do, what are they saying needs to be done to, to, in their consideration, be conforming?
Basically just our approval, right? No, no change to the structure at all?
All they're asking for is for the city council to pass a resolution saying that it has legal status to stay in the location that it is currently in. Because it is in a city park, the state typically does not allow billboards in a city park, but if they, the email that I have says, if the council approves it and giving it legal status, they will change it from non-conforming to conforming.
I can interject for, for my two cents. I did have a conversation with the store manager of Cabela's, which, as you know, the skin on there now is just old, but it is for Cabela's. I said, "Are you interested in, in maintaining that?" As for an invitation to come into the downtown and shop, he said absolutely yes. Now, we don't know if they'll be able to participate in the funding or to what degree, but they absolutely want to keep the presence on that billboard for Cabela's. This group will have to decide also, is there room on there to mention anything else? Whether it be the campground, the movie theater, you think about the main kind of draw that is our downtown, the top several items that would bring people in, probably those are the top three. The campground, Cabela's, and the movie theater, which is a draw for all the restaurants and everything else. We don't want to get it so cluttered that you can't see a message on there, so that would be the, the one negative to bringing anything else into it. But just ponder that, as for what could that look like? Cabela's may be the most prominent, maybe a mention of campground, maybe mention of movie theater. Riverwalk Center, I guess it could be.
Life connected. Questions?
What kind of revenue does this...
Really none. It really is an economic development piece to, to bring vitality to our downtown. So what does it bring? It brings revenue to our businesses, nothing to the city.
Sure, okay, we don't, we don't charge.
No.
Is, and I'll have to go back and look, but does anybody recall if there was some type of an agreement with Cabela's that indicated that the city would have them on that for any length of time? That went along with letting them, or, you know, getting them to build in the downtown? I know that the original agreement was for the downtown, but I don't remember anything about this billboard.
I do remember a connection from the billboard to Cabela's as part of the agreement. I don't know if there was a term attached, but yes, that was a...
I doubt if it'd be perpetuity, it'd be forever.
No.
I would think that we'd have to have a limit on that.
No. But if, if that was the inception of it, you know, even if the spirit of it can go forward, that's probably a good thing.
I have no problem. I'll just, I'll look at it, I just didn't remember if it, somebody had already looked it up.
No offense to Cabela's, but I have a problem with giving preference to Cabela's over it, and us as a council choosing what goes on there. I don't, I don't know if it's right for us to give them the sign, unless we have an agreement with them that says that it is their sign. There are many other downtown businesses that would be interested, I feel, in having a rotation on that billboard. I've purchased a billboard before. It costs over $1,000 for a month. So if we own that billboard, we can generate some revenue off that billboard. That, that we could have a rotation among our downtown businesses that would be interested in having a presence on it. That's a very busy road, and I, I get the campground and the mall that's down there, but I think individual businesses would prefer to have an option to be featured on that billboard.
Reed.
Kind of a little bit in line with what Ben is saying, as Megan referenced, there'd been a lot of staff involved in this one over the years. Probably four or five years ago, I was working on it and passing information to Mr. Murphy. At that time, there was a commercial billboard interest, billboard company interested in putting an electronic board in that location. And it, it wasn't legal at that time, so it pretty much ended. But, I mean, if it becomes legal and we have the opportunity to update it, there may be opportunity there. There's a lot of utilities already running there, so I think to get electricity there would be fairly simple. So to go out to a bid to a company, whether that's, goes out to a commercial company bid and we take some revenue that way, or we own it and sell the advertising ourselves, I have no idea, but just so that's out there for people that know that.
One guiding principle for me that, that really triggered this whole thing is if you're at the swimming pool looking at the back of that, it looks awful. So whatever else we do, we've got to clean up the back of it, so it's not an eyesore for the patrons in our, in our pool and in our park area there.
I think bring it forward to vote next week, and we'll go from there.
Get it approved, right? So where it has a status, then we can go whichever which way. The reader board.
All right. Anything else in that? If not, we'll make a motion to adjourn. Moved by Larson. Second by Repel. In favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried, meeting is adjourned. Five-minute break, and then we'll go into close.